I call the Kitty Hawk Town Council to order Monday, June 1st, 2015 at Kitty Hawk Town Hall, 6:00 PM. Welcome to those folks that came out. Glad to see you. Not as many as I expected, but that's all right. We'll move on. Would you join us in a moment of silence in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Do I hear a motion for approval of the agenda? Does someone have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. The agenda is approved. That's promulgated. Next, we have public comment. Melody, has anybody signed up?
No.
Does anyone wish to speak at this part or this part of the council meeting, public comment section? Anyone? Let the record show, no one came forward. Consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. And Chief Johnson, there was one item on there that Police Officer Elke has left us.
Yes, sir.
And both he and, you're fine, both he and his wife served in the Armed Forces.
Yes, sir.
All right. Tell him our concerns for his family, and I hope he gets better, and I'd like to see him come back if he gets.
He's actually, he's going to stay on as a reserve officer.
Okay.
Meaning that if any time we have an opening, I'll contact him and see if he's prepared at that time to come back. It's a very hard decision, and we've been talking about it for a while, so he needs to take care of his family needs.
Understood.
Now, and then he can come back to us.
Okay. I'm glad to hear that.
Yes, sir.
But convey council's concerns and hope that his family gets better quick. All right. We didn't have anything removed. That was a little bit out of order, but I just felt a need to speak there. All right. Public hearings. First public hearing we have is the fiscal year 2015-16 budget. Do I hear a motion to go into public hearing?
Does someone move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're now in public hearing. John, this is your show.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we had discussed a lot of the details of the budget, I believe, at the workshop, and so this is kind of give everyone here an idea, a rough overview of exactly what we're looking at as far as the proposed budget for 2015, 2016. The general fund totals is $7,257,443, and this recommended budget represents a $271,810 increase from the adopted fiscal year 2014-2015 budget. This budget includes a transfer of $131,732 from the general fund and $17,200 from the capital reserve. Budget increases current tax rate of 32 cents to 34 cents townwide with an additional 12 cent increase within the MSD Municipal Service District. Of the 34 cents, 4 cents will be dedicated to the beach nourishment, and the previous 2 cents for storm damage reduction will go away. The tax increase due to the town's five-year debt service for $10,185,309, special obligation bond for beach nourishment capital project, that will be free for the beach nourishment capital project. Okay? Some other general highlights of the budget. This includes a 2 percent step increase for eligible employees, continuation of 2% 401K match for all employees, and mandated 5% contribution for law enforcement officers. Includes the high deductible health plan, which we call HDHP. And also, we're establishing our own email system within the town, which provides unlimited archival storage of email to ensure that we meet state email record retention guidelines. Our present cost is $366.03 per month, and new cost would be $490 per month for 49 accounts, and that's spread out amongst all the departments. Some other highlights on the budget. We have established a separate category for ocean rescue, which used to be in the, under the fire department, so now that's all broken out, so that can be seen exactly, the expenditures for ocean rescue. We have a separate summary for beach nourishment capital project. We have a purchase of vehicle for our code enforcement fire inspection officer, replacing a service truck for Public Works, replacing a mower for Public Works. We have a monies in the budget for hiring up seasonal employees within Public Works, and also we're replacing a vehicle for the town hall. Some other highlights, replacing a vehicle, one vehicle in the police department. We have some office equipment in the police department we're replacing, and for the fire department, we're replacing breathing apparatus. Just to kind of indicate exactly what is included in the budget document, we have a budget message, the budget ordinance, capital project and capital reserve ordinance, departmental budgets, budget development calendar, council goals, work objectives, and financial policies, board and committee work plans. We have the position classification salary scale, the capital expenditures. We have the approved positions and longevity bonuses. We have the retiree health insurance payments, and we also have the separation allowance included in the budget. I know we're in the public hearing, so I believe you have to go out of the public hearing before you make any motion, but I just included that, and that's also in the packet. The motion's in the packet, too. Any questions?
All right. Before I ask for any speakers, I have a question. In adopting the budget, if we were to adopt it tonight, and the general legislature, which is doing things with tax rates, sales tax, things of that nature, which have not been settled out yet, would that have an impact if they passed something before, well, for next year? Would that have an impact on what we're doing or would do tonight as far as the sales tax on this budget?
On the sales taxes, our understanding, if they pass something, it would not go into effect this following, this coming fiscal year, but the following fiscal year, so it would not impact this budget.
Okay. So whatever we do to.
Whatever you do tonight.
Won't be impacted by that.
Will be impacted by that legislation.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Now, beach nourishment is another issue that, you know, they're messing around with that. The Board of Commissioners, if I understand it correctly, today endorsed a proposal to move forward with that part of the 2% beach nourishment. Would that impact tonight what we are setting in motion if we approve this budget? Any way that you can see that might impact this budget? Now, I know it would impact future budgets perhaps, but this budget tonight?
On the occupancy tax?
Yeah, that beach nourishment part of the occupancy tax that might be shifted.
I think it remains on schedule. We would continue on with the same schedule we'd given before, right? Isn't that correct? Yeah. We would still maintain the same schedule they had given us before.
Okay.
Yes.
I just kind of wanted to clear those things out, because there's so much still in upheaval. If we approve it tonight, whether or not we would have to come back and make some adjustments later. I'm not even sure what the procedure would be for that, but let's hope we don't have to do that, so we won't go there. All right. Anybody else have a question of John before I call for speakers? Is there anyone here tonight that wants to speak to the proposed budget? Donnie?
Hello, everyone. Johnny King, I guess by now you probably figured I'd be here. But as a commercial property owner, I just want to be heard in favor of the 2 cent increase to this budget as it relates to beach nourishment, as well as the established MSD in which my property is located, in hopes that it can be maintained at around, you know, 12 additional cents, making a total of 14, because this is a necessary project. I also want to recognize that Kitty Hawk is known for responsible budgeting practices, and the only increase we're asking for today is basically to fund this project, which most of us feel is the only alternative to retreat, so I'm glad to see you possibly moving forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? No one else? Well, we kind of expected more, but that's fine. All right. Let the record show, no one else came forward. Do I hear a motion to go back into regular session?
Does someone move?
Second?
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We're back in regular session. What does council want to do with this proposed budget?
I'll make a motion to approve. I move for the adoption of the 2015-2016 budget documents, which include the budget ordinance as presented by the town manager. I further move that the tax rate for fiscal year 2015 and 2016 be set at 34 cents per hundred valuation townwide, and an additional 12 cents per hundred valuation for the municipal service district. I further move that the FY 2015-2016 budget shall be effective as of July 1st, 2015.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. That's your last budget?
That's my last budget.
It's your last budget and him's last budget. Wow. Everybody's going phew.
Yeah.
What's that all about? All right. We have two more, and I'm going to take them one at a time, because the conditional use requires swearing in, so we'll do the next one. Do I hear a motion to go into public hearing for a text amendment to amend Kitty Hawk Town Code? Do I hear a motion to go in?
Does someone move, Mr. Mayor?
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. You're up.
This text amendment application is for subsection 42-250(c), which would add subsection 34 to allow vehicle rentals as a conditionally permitted use in the BC-1 Beach Commercial Zoning District. As you all may recall, in April of 2014, you heard a similar request for vehicle rentals as a conditional use in BC-1. That was denied at that time. This application differs from the previous application, and I think it tries to address the concerns that council had from 2014. Some of the reasons for denial of the previous one is it would have allowed the vehicle rentals as a primary use of a property or as one of many tenants on a multi-tenant commercial property. This current application would require that it be a sole use of the property, so no multi-tenant uses, no ancillary uses, which would address the concern with creating an inconvenience for other tenants and add confusion and detract from the safe traffic flow on site. The current application's also a little more restrictive, I guess, than the original one that came in. The applicant tried to address as many concerns as possible to make it kind of suit what he's looking for. The specific conditions that were listed in the application are listed on page one of the staff report. After going through there, staff kind of tried to, cleaned up the language a little bit. I'll read through the proposed, what the planning board recommended. There'd be no more than three rental vehicles to be parked in front of the building. The remainder of the fleet shall be parked in the rear of the building. Total number of rental vehicles shall not exceed 15. That was, I think, to address one of the previous concerns, too, that the vehicle rental businesses could, you know, have 100 vehicles that stay somewhere else, and they bring them in, rotate them in and out. So this is saying that the entire fleet would be 15 max. Site must have sufficient interior storage for vehicle accessories. The location must have a counter area with restrooms. Vehicle rental business must be the sole use of the property. No high occupancy vehicles, which the planning board determined would be seating for 10 or more passengers would be included in the fleet. Rental vehicle repair and/or maintenance shall not be performed on site. And the one more significant change that staff has recommended and the planning board recommended, the original application mentioned no more than seven customer or employee vehicles to be parked on site, to try to keep it consistent with how zoning ordinance addresses parking requirements for other businesses. I put in a recommendation to amend 42-546, the table with the minimum parking requirements, to state that a vehicle rental business would require one space per 200 square feet of office space. Again, I just thought that would keep it kind of more consistent with what the town's already doing with other business types. And that number, the 200 square feet, wasn't just plucked out of the air. I kind of looked around at what some other localities have their parking requirements, and I think it was Kill Devil Hills that has the 200 square feet requirement. The, at the April 16th planning board meeting, they unanimously recommended approval of the proposed text amendment. That's all I've got. If there's any questions for me and the applicants here as well, if there's any questions that I can't answer.
Counsel, anybody got a question for Rob? No? No? Does any member of the public wish to speak? Anyone? All right. We have no questions of Rob, and the public doesn't want to speak. Let the record show, no one came forward. Do I hear a motion to go back into regular session?
Does someone move?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're in regular session. What does council want to do with this?
I'll make a motion.
Do it.
I move to adopt the proposed text amendment to section 42-250(c), adding subsection 34 allowing vehicle rentals as a conditional use in BC-1 zoning district, and amending 42-546 minimum parking requirements to parking standards for the vehicle rental business. Town council finds the proposed text amendment is consistent with the town's adopted Camel Land use plan, and finds this amendment to be in the public interest.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. That's one part of this. The next part is a conditional use for that text amendment change, and in order to do that, I'm going to have to swear some people. Should I do that before a call for public hearing?
Well, go ahead and call for public hearing. If anybody wants to speak, you'll swear them in.
All right. Do I hear a motion to go into public hearing?
Does someone move?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And the reason I'm doing this is because Lynn is off. Her son got married, I believe, on Sunday, and she's in Charlotte. He's from here. His bride is from Currituck, and they decided to go far, far away to get it done, but anyway, I'm the next officer to do the oath. Does anyone else that's going to want to speak, I need to swear you as well. Anyone in the audience? If not, all right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
All right. The conditional use permit application is for 4011 North Croatan Highway to establish a vehicle rental business as the sole use. It's currently the Kitty Hawk Car Wash. As we went over in the previous public hearing, the maximum fleet, fleet size would be 15 vehicles, up to three vehicles to be parked in front of the property. And, what's that kind of good for? Sorry, I forgot how to use that old thing. Can you switch? Can you turn the switch? Well, it's in your handouts, so hopefully we can talk through it. Let's see. There'd be up to three vehicles parked in front of the property, which is Marklet's A on the site plan they have. The additional twelve vehicles would be stored in the bay area of the building and in the rear of the property. Three could fit in the bay, and then the rest in the rear of the property. Also, in the bay area, which is currently the car wash portion of it, the vehicle accessories could be stored there. The jeeps, if the doors were coming off, they could store the doors all in there. The current proposal also provides up to 10 parking spaces, including one handicap space that meets the one per 200 square feet of office space, and no additional handicap spaces would be required. Went through the conditions that we set in the text amendment. The proposal's been designed to meet all of these standards. Let's see. The adjacent properties to the south is the Right Place Daycare Center. The east are a few residential uses. The north is a vacant gas station, all of which are zoned as BC-1. There are several other commercial properties across Croatan Highway that are zoned BC-2. That's the Guysey Lee Building Materials and the Johnson Burgess Mazel Shrub Accounting Firm. For the site itself, there's going to be no changes to the existing access. It'll still be using the same ingress egress way. I already went over the parking sign. We haven't discussed any signage at this point. I assume that there'll be a new sign for like vehicle rental rather than car wash, and that will be taken care of administrative with the sign permit process. The land use plan designates the subject property as commercial shopping and working area on the future land use map. Planning board has determined that this is consistent with the land use plan. And per the standards of 4299b7, in order to approve the application, the town council must make the findings of the proposed conditional use. A, does not materially endanger the public health or safety. As I mentioned, it'll use the same ingress egress access. I don't think that this type of use would increase the amount of traffic entering or exiting the highway. There's no other changes on the ground that it's going to impact traffic flow or that would appear to endanger the health or safety of the public. B, it does meet all the required conditions and specifications. As I mentioned, this is kind of designed specifically to those conditions. C, will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or be a public nuisance. I think a vehicle rental business would probably be a less intense use than a car wash is there, in the amount of traffic and people on site, so I can't see that as entering the adjoining property value. And D, will be in harmony with the area in which it's located and be in general conformity with the conference of plan. It's, it would just be converting one commercial use to another, and it's in an area of the land use plan that's been identified for commercial uses. And again, at the April 16th meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the proposed conditional use permit. If that'll turn it over, if you have any questions for me?
All right. Does council have any questions of Rob?
Well, I'll just make a comment. I've always kind of thought that a car rental business could be a permitted use with parking standards, because I just don't really see the reason for the extra scrutiny for a conditional, you know, that's required by a conditional use. But since this is going to pass, or I think it will, I'm going to, you know, that's my only comment.
All right. All right. Since no one wanted to be sworn, that pretty much does it. If no one has a comment, do I hear a motion to go back in regular session?
Does someone move?
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We're back in regular session. What does council want to do with this one?
Mr. Mayor, I move to grant approval of this conditional use permit application to establish vehicle rental business at 4011 North Croatan Highway, subject to the conditions recommended by the planning board. Town council concurs with the conditional use findings in the staff report, finds that approval of this conditional use permit is consistent with the town's adopted Camel Land Use Plan, and finds that granting approval is in the public interest.
Second.
Any further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it? Change your sign.
I'll say as it's the fall.
All right.
And I, you know, I guess I would look back to see you as some looking at a piece of property, you'd be the car wash, too. And you get one, you know, over one hurdle at a time.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Next is planning, and we're talking about Clubhouse Estates Drive and a desire by the property owners for the town to take that over and maintain it. Rob, would you do that one, please?
Sure. As you mentioned, the property owners on Clubhouse Estates Drive have submitted a petition to the town requesting that we take over ownership and maintenance of the road. This was initially sent in in August of last year, and for, I think, the owner who I've been in contact with said they kind of just let it slide for a little bit, and then in the past month or two, they've kind of gotten back on it and wanted to follow through with it. The roadway itself, it's approximately 550 feet in length. According to the minutes of the April 8th, 2004 planning board's final plat review, the roadway had been built to all-town standards, and they had submitted DOT sign-offs on the paving, testing, and core samples to the planning department. I was not able to find that file, but as was in the minutes in that meeting, I'm tempted to trust it. Looking at the plat, it does have the appropriate roadway width, the radiator, the dander, the cul-de-sac is all within the standards. And also reading through those minutes, it looked like when they initially built that road in 2004, it was intended to be dedicated as a public road, but evidently it wasn't ever done. Public Works Department has inspected the roadway and deemed that it is in acceptable condition for the town to accept it into its system. Currently over there is a seescape area. According to the Powell Bill map, all the other roads are already listed as qualifying town streets except for Putter Lane, Johnston Lane, Pinnacle Court, and Clubhouse Estates Drive. I did speak with Stephanie Benson. She's the Powell Bill program manager with NCDOT, and she confirmed that if we're taking over maintenance and getting Powell Bill money to take over the maintenance, that we do take over the ownership as well. If, I guess if the town, if the council wishes to approve this request, it'll be contingent on the owners then dedicating the roadway to the town. So we'll, we'll take ownership of maintenance responsibilities until they dedicate the roadway to the town. And attached in your packet, a few photographs from the road when I went out to take a look at it, as well as the petition that was submitted by the property owners and the subdivision plan of that section. Got any questions?
I have one for Willie. Willie, there's a dirt road off the cul-de-sac that is used for maintenance by the seescape, and that just drops off from asphalt to dirt.
It does have a little crush around it.
Does have a little crush around it.
It does have some crushing run.
Just a little bit.
It's very little, because I didn't see it.
It's beat down.
Okay, um, is that a problem for us if we take it over without some repair to that or some?
I don't think so. In looking at it, I don't, I don't think it would be, and I know speaking with a couple guys from the golf course and active work there, they would put, keep it, they would fill it in, maintain, make sure it's.
Okay, because I don't want us to, you know, take it over and then suddenly have to do a piece of asphalt.
Absolutely.
So you can keep on top of that?
Yes, sir.
And I have a question, and that has to do with, you know, part of what the owners were talking about were trucks going back and forth, and is this just a, an attempt to make sure that this road is taken over by the town so that they don't wind up with another ride lane situation? Or is there something, you know, some other reason that other, you know, I, I seemed, I, I detected some discontent here about the truck traffic, et cetera?
I don't know, the traffic kind of comes from back to maintenance, it's really just U T Vs and owners.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I.
They pick up, unless they're doing any actual golf course work or replacing sod or anything. I really, I have never seen any trucks doing that.
I, I went over there today and, and rode on the little dirt road, and I, you know, it seemed to me that it was some, one guy with a, brought a golf cart back there, and that was pretty much it, so. Yeah, I just, I just wondered, you know, if it was, and then the other thing is, if they dedicate this road to us, that doesn't mean that we're taking the road and have to reimburse or any kind of eminent domain, nothing like that. It's just the road is there, we take the road, we then maintain it, we hope, we, we hopefully get Powell Bill money, and so everything is, is super fine.
Correct, and I, I would suggest to you that if you're going to do this, that the dedication has to be in a form acceptable to the town, so that the town owns this, this roadway, so that you can maintain it, and that the cost for doing that be borne by the property owners who want you to take it over. In other words, you, you're not having to pay somebody to go out and, and do this work. They're going to present it to you in a package that's acceptable to you, certifying that they have the ability to convey that roadway to the town.
Okay, so that would go in the motion?
I would think that would go in the motion. Anyone else have a question? No? All right, hang, hang on.
Hey Willie, it looks like there's a lot of trees on this one section, maybe it's just the, the way I'm looking at the picture. Is this something we're going to get in here and have to cut some trees back and make people mad? I don't want to be in a tree war. Okay, it looks like some oak.
We actually do that on ride lane, we don't even own it, and don't want to own it either. You're talking cutting trees, and he's talking cutting brush.
Right.
But I hear where you're coming from, we're, we're not a town to the north of us, thank you. All right, um, any other questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
I'll give it a shot.
Give it an edgey.
I'm gonna try.
Just do the best you can.
Yeah, Steve is, Steve will, he'll, he'll straighten me out. I move that the town finds that Clubhouse Estates, Clubhouse Estates Drive meets all town road standards, and that after the road has been dedicated to the town with a legal, um, a package for the dedication funded by the property owners. Does that, does that handle it? You said it a lot.
And satisfactory to the town.
And satisfactory to the town. The town agrees to take over maintenance duties as well as ownership of the currently private road, Clubhouse Estates Drive.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Do I hear any further comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, when they get it dedicated and fixed up to our, and our means Willie, I think, satisfaction, then we'll go from there. All right, uh, next we need a motion to call for a public hearing. Do I hear a motion for that?
Mr. Mayor, I move to set a public hearing for the town council meeting on July the seventh, twenty fifteen, regarding the proposed text amendment to Charter forty, Article three of the Kitty Hawk Town Code, updating standards for wireless communication facilities.
All right, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed?
No, no. Yes, I know. But I had, I had sent one, one, one change to Rob.
Ask the question.
Did you, did you get that email that I sent to you that had, that found two more bad references in this, in this thing? Based on la, la, the last time we looked at it?
I don't think I saw it. We had a time, was it a week or two ago, when our email was down?
Yeah.
So maybe it was during that time. I'll look through my email again.
Okay, well, I, I don't have my computer available right at the moment, but I will tomorrow, and I'll try to find that. So can I just ask that the motion include that the, that, that those changes be made? It's just a call for a public hearing, but we might as well make it right.
If I could add in the motion that the two, the changes that Emily has found be corrected.
And a second?
Second.
All right, and we're still in favor?
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
If it's not right, Ms. M, we will not pass it. She has kept us straight. All right, now we have to make some appointments to the planning board and board of adjustment. We've got quite a few changes here, so bear with us, please, folks. And the first one is to, we need to appoint or reappoint some people to the planning board. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Lynn McLean, John Richardson, and Chuck Heath as regular members on the planning boards. Term of office will expire June twenty seventeen.
Those are all.
Reappoint.
Okay, those are all reappointments then. All right, do I hear any other nominations? All right, do I hear a motion to approve those appointments?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next we have to fill, um, Oscar Northern's vacancy on the planning board. Do I hear a motion to do that?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Dylan Tillot to fill Oscar Northern's vacancy on the planning board. This is effective July first and will end June two thousand and sixteen.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hear any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The next thing we're doing, and what I'm doing here, folks, is with Lynn gone, the clerk always keeps us straight. We usually ball this up, but she typed this out, so we, we got us a cheat sheet, and it's going to work all right. Next, we're appointing somebody as an alternate on the planning board for a term of office until June twenty seventeen. Do I hear that, a motion for, or a nomination for that?
I move to appoint Jim Garrity as an alternate to the planning board term of offices until June two thousand and seventeen.
Do I hear any other nomination? Not hearing any other nomination? Do I hear a motion to approve that appointment?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now we're, we have to appoint someone as an alternate on the planning board for a term of office until June twenty sixteen. Do we hear a nomination for that appointment?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint Gary Murrow as an alternate on the planning board term of offices until June two thousand and sixteen.
Do I hear any other nominations? Do I hear a motion to approve that nomination?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and next we're appointing a chairman of the planning board, Oscar Lefteris, so we have to fill that, uh, that position. Do I hear a nomination for appointing chairman of the planning board?
I move to appoint Lynn McLean as chairman of the planning board, term to begin July first and end June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hear any no other nomination? Do I hear a motion to approve that nomination?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we're, we have to appoint as another vice chair. Since we moved Lynn up, we got a vacancy as vice chair. Do I hear a nomination for that appointment?
I move to appoint John Richardson to the vice chairman of the planning board, term to begin July first and end on June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hear any no other nomination? Do I hear a motion to approve that nomination?
Motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Board of Adjustment, we have to appoint or reappoint regular members on the board of adjustment. Terms of office will expire June twenty eighteen. Do I hear nominations for that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I move to reappoint Matt Spencer and Chris Jenkins as regular members on the board of adjustments. Terms of office will expire June twenty eighteen.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hear any no other nominations? Do I hear a motion to approve those nominations?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And now we need to appoint a regular member to fill some gaps on the board of adjustment with a term to expire June twenty eighteen. Do I hear a nomination?
I move to appoint Christine Buckner as a regular member on the board of adjustment with a term to expire June twenty eighteen.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hear any no other nominations? Do I hear a motion to approve that nomination?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And we have to fill an unexpired term on the board of adjustment. We moved Jim Garrity. Do I hear a nomination for that?
I move to appoint Charlotte Walker to fill an unexpired term. Jim Garrity on the board of adjustments with a term to expire two thousand and sixteen.
Do I hear any other nomination? Hear any no other nomination? Do I hear a motion to approve that nomination?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, we need to appoint a vice chairman of the board of adjustment. We've moved some people around. Term of office is until a successor is named. Do I hear a nomination for that?
Mr. Mayor, I move to appoint David Morton as vice chairman of the board of adjustments. This term of office is until a successor is named.
Do I hear any other nominations? Hear any no other nomination? Do I hear a motion to approve that nomination?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, and we, we have some alternates for the board of adjustment. We'll do these separately. Let's do the first one. Appoint an alternate to the board of adjustment with a term to expire twenty eighteen. Do I hear a nomination for that?
May I move to appoint Timothy Fish as an alternate on the board of adjustment with a term to expire twenty eighteen?
Do I hear an alternate or any other nomination? Hear any no other nomination? Do I hear a motion to approve that nomination?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have one final possible appointment as an alternate in the board of adjustment. Do I hear a nomination for anyone for that position?
Mr. Mayor, due to some last minute applications, I think some of us on the council would like a little bit more time to look over some of the, um, applications at this time for that position, if that would be okay.
Is that the way everybody feels?
Yeah, yes, sir.
All right, so we'll, we'll have one open spot awaiting a volunteer or until we feel comfortable with it. All right, well, that fills up. Let me check, that should be everything. All right, you get everything you needed, Melanie? Okay. All right, I'm sorry, that's a little tedious, but it has to be done every so often. Now, we're into a resolution, possibly in support of taxes. And I want some comments before we get into this, before council makes a decision whether they want to go this way. Some things have changed in the sense that there, for the dredging, there are two avenues that have been proposed. One of them is a quarter cent tax that would be required from the general legislature or the, uh, North Carolina Legislature for a quarter cent sales tax without referendum. Don't know where that's going. Today, I understand that the Board of Commissioners for Dare also approved something, a resolution, suggesting that they would go along with taking money from the Beach Nurishment Fund. So what I've done is I've brought before council this resolution in support of a Dare County request that the General Assembly allowed Dare County to levy a quarter cent sales tax without a referendum. I don't know if it's too late, but I felt like we needed to get on board with how we felt on this. So I'm going to be asking each council member some questions, and I'm going to make a statement leading up to it before I even call it for any kind of a vote. And basically, the proposed resolution is not something any council member really wants. Any additional tax, and especially a tax without referendum, is not something any of us saw coming when trying to find a way to reduce storm damage to our beachfront. However, the move to use beach nourishment funds for dredging is problematic for proposed projects already programmed for construction. While the projected revenue of the two cent nourishment tax seems like a great deal of money, it is not. When considering the cost of engineering, permitting, construction, monitoring, and expected maintenance of four towns and the Buxton Nourishment Projects, every dollar of the anticipated revenue had been documented by financial experts as needed to accomplish all the tasks related to those projects. When the bean counters recalculated the beach nourishment revenue to include dredging, that action took out some maintenance funding and money that towns expected would be available to replenish sand after the planned five-year life cycle. That means a future council will not have the expected ability to reduce or eliminate additional re-nourishment tax rates. If the initial project is reasonably successful, then a continued higher town ad valorem tax rate would be required to add future nourishment to the beach. Council recognizes the issues at our inlets. The resolution before us tonight probably represents the best solution to remedy both problems without causing harm to either issue. Now, I have been at the meetings where the bean counters financially engineered and re-engineered, and have now re-engineered again the same dollars of projected money that we don't yet have, but it's expected revenue. That's very worrisome, because if you take from a plan that was already obligated out into the future for money you anticipated to receive, and now you're doing something yet again with that same funds, anybody among us can see that's a potential problem. And have we learned nothing from oh eight, oh nine, when the hiccup of the economy occurred? So, I brought to council this resolution that I would like to sign tonight and send directly to Paul Tyne and Bill Cook before the legislature finalizes whatever it is they're going to do so that they know whether or not we accept what the Board of Commissioners has actually proposed to do with that nourishment. The inlet's important, I understand that. But two inlets bucking up against all that's before us today is going to deplenish or deplete funds that were already obligated. And that's the thing that really bothers me. So, um, let me read the resolution, and then we'll discuss it, and you can make a motion to accept it or not. Whereas a crisis situation exists for Dare County inlets that warrants North Carolina General Assembly legislative action during the two thousand and fifteen Legislative Assembly, and whereas, now- Whereas a crisis situation exists for Dare County inlets that warrants North Carolina General Assembly legislative action during the 2015 Legislative Assembly, and whereas navigation channel shoaling conditions have continually deteriorated at Oregon Inlet and Hatters Inlet to the point of denying all but the smallest vessels access to ocean waters, and... Whereas the federal government has ceased funding the federal obligation to maintain navigable channels to the Atlantic Ocean between Chesapeake Bay and Hyde County, thereby denying access to government agencies such as the Coast Guard for rescue missions, and... Whereas Oregon Inlet, Oregon and Hatters Inlets' access to ocean waters support a wide variety of jobs in Dare County and generates tax revenue which supports local and state citizens, and... Whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners is urgently seeking a source of funding to provide ongoing dredging as an urgent matter of public safety and economic importance to the state, and... Whereas the Dare County Board of Commissioners, needing an immediate funding source for management of Dare County's inlets and waterways, has asked the North Carolina General Assembly to expand the local option sales tax and authorize a quarter cent sales tax without a referendum, and... Whereas House Bill 388 entitled Dare County Local Option Sales Tax has been authorized as an urgent and timely matter of public safety and economic importance, and... Whereas the proposed source of funding will prevent having to use occupancy tax funds that have already been obligated to fund program projects in four Dare County towns and at Buxton on Hatters Island. Now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council of Kitty Hawk does hereby strongly support House Bill 388, the request of Dare County for a local sales option tax for the management of Dare County's Oregon Inlet and Hatters Inlet, and supports Dare County's request that it remain in effect until the new Bonner Bridge is built and the existing Bonner Bridge has been successfully removed. So, council, what we're trying to do is to find an alternate source of funding for something that's been deemed important without depleting something that's also equally important and programmed in. Council, what can I say?
I got a question.
Sure.
Now, you and I, we were over in Mania, and I thought the commissioners made a decision and they were gonna take their portion of the occupancy tax along with the money that they're getting from the government would pay for the $7 million for the dredging for you. What happened?
That's a good question. I think they made that decision without knowing where they were gonna get the funding from, and they found out they can't get it. They're either not willing to cut something, or they're not willing to raise, uh... Property tax to get the difference. I... I don't have an answer to that, but it didn't happen, so you see what's happening now.
Well... Well, one of the things that... And one of the things that happened was that the county was designating some, uh... Funding that, uh... That designation was unconstitutional because it was... The... The funding that they were going after was the result of a law that was passed by the legislature. This is my understanding of what the problem was. The... The law was passed by the state legislature, and the purpose of the law was for that two cents, uh... Worth of occupancy taxes that the county could actually pass was specifically designated for beach nourishment.
No, you're confusing.
Was that...
The first... The first go at it was the seventeen thirty seconds of whatever occupancy, not beach nourishment tax was. What you're referring to was the sand tax, the repealed sand tax money.
Oh, okay.
And that was...
That was...
That was suggested as an alternate source.
But they couldn't use that.
And we've learned this when we went through our hearing and all the process. Once that's dedicated, and that has already been dedicated, you can't go back and do anything else with it.
Okay. So it was just that part of it?
It was just that part.
Okay. All right.
So now what they're doing is they're trying to go in and change the law so that anything in the future can be used for something beyond just the beach nourishment. And I guess they've got a hiccup with that, uh... Because they... They said 2016 versus 2015, so I don't know how that's gonna flesh out, but it's a matter of when they can get their dibs into it.
The... The other part of that question, I'm sorry, um...
Yeah.
Was the decision they made today to use the... The beach nourishment money. Did they make any indication of possibly replenishing that fund in a future date, or where they're gonna go for the additional funding that they're gonna need?
They're gonna borrow... Okay, this is the last that John and I have been at a meeting. Uh... They're going to borrow against the funds... To pay for money, the revenues that are coming in. And the bean counters have financially engineered that to say, okay, we can do that with what we had already programmed in. But where that's gonna hurt us is just like I tried to say in my brief in the beginning. That's gonna hurt us when it comes time to re-nourish. And it might hurt us if we have a hiccup in the economy because we own this project. Each town owns this project. All right? Once the bond is set, then somebody's gotta pay that back. And if the county doesn't have the money, we have to be careful. And that's why I'm bringing this up, and that's why I'm trying to say to the folks out here, this is something you need to understand. I'm trying. I don't know if I'm getting it across, but I'm trying desperately to make you understand what's going on. Jeff, you got any additional comments?
Uh... I... Like we said, it's a projected income, and, you know, um... I don't see any options. Uh... I think your resolution, uh... Is... Is very well-written and needed. Um... I certainly wish the federal government and other agencies would take this up instead of the county, especially right now. Uh... It does worry me, and, um... When we're spending money that we're expected five years from now, a lot can happen in five years, and we... We know there's a risk up here, but we know that we need the inlet. Uh... So, uh... I guess I'm willing to take a risk.
Well, we're kinda, you know... We're kinda locked into that part of it. But the risk... The risks that we started out with, we understood. They've changed the dynamics of that risk to make it a little more of a risk, and that's what I'm trying to get across.
Yeah. My question is, we signed an agreement. All the towns signed an agreement with the county. And that agreement had in it what they were going to do and what we were going to do. So, what I see happening right now is that they have come up with a financial solution that they say is consistent with that agreement. Except for the out years or... Or the years that go beyond that agreement.
Do you understand it any different, John?
No.
That's it. That's what I don't understand. Everything that we did in terms of Kitty Hawk's project was based on what the county was going to do and what we were going to do.
Exactly.
And what I feel like... My... My feeling is that we should have some confidence that what we're doing right now in passing the budget and setting the tax rates and such is really still what's in place. That's... That's my main question. If the county is not really sure that they're going to be able to do their part, everything that we have done for the beach nourishment project funding then is kind of questionable. But we've got this agreement that we all signed up to, and I just wanna know that that's what we're doing.
And that's how much we're gonna get.
And that's how much we're gonna get. Yeah.
Well, as far as the initial construction and five years out, they say that we're gonna get that. Now, that's assume... That's assuming that that money, the revenue actually comes in. What happens after that, that's where the dynamic changed. Because we were all... Nag's Head, for example, was under the impression that when they get ready to re-nourish, the two cents, when everybody agreed to the extra penny, the two cents would pretty much take care of that. And they could lower their rate, MSD and otherwise, and we felt the same way.
We did too, yes.
That may not happen. All right? Just that simple.
So our projected, what was it, three to five-year maintenance is what we're looking at in jeopardy here?
Possibly.
I mean, the... The initial, like Emily was saying, our... Our initial figures that we were ga... We received in the very beginning are gonna stay the same, pretty much.
Correct. Yes.
So to get through the project, we... We basically said that the MSD rate would have to stay in place for five years.
Correct.
And maybe we were assuming something that we shouldn't have been assuming, but I guess the question then becomes, at the end of that five years, if what we had thought, which was we'd be able to... Particularly the MSD rate, we would be able to, uh... Reduce that.
Right.
That if we can't reduce that, then doesn't that require like another public hearing and, uh... And people determining whether they wanna continue with the project?
That's the key. At that point, if that money is not there, to do it from the two cents, a future council's gonna have to make a decision. Is this project worth continuing? And how much is the people willing to shell out to do it?
Yes.
And that's where it comes down, and that's what I'm trying to... I'm trying to get across to folks that that may be what happens in the future. All right?
Well, I'm glad that this is all being said in a public meeting because everything we've said up until this point has been that after five years, there would be some sort of a reduction because it would be a maintenance-type thing, not the construction of the project.
And that's exactly why I brought it to you and am making such a pitch, because I want it done here so that people understand. All right? Craig, you got any?
It's ridiculous how many times this thing has changed since it came about. The emails are flying today, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for keeping us informed today. I was not happy about this when it first came about, and none of us were. I'm still not happy about it. But I think it's vital for the four towns you've mentioned in your resolution, we've got to stick together. I... I feel like we have no choice but to support this resolution.
All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution?
Uh... I move to approve the resolution in support of Dare County's request that the North Carolina General Assembly allow Dare County to levy a quarter cent sales tax without a referendum.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. We'll try to get this to, uh... Representative Tine and Senator Cook by tomorrow. Okay. Reports, comments from the manager. You got anything?
Yes, sir. Uh... Mr. Mayor, I have one item for... For council this evening, and I... I make a public announcement. The council's been aware of this, but I just wanted to make this a... A public announcement that, uh... At last year... For the last eight years, I've served as town manager here at Kitty Hawk, and during those years, I've grown to develop an association with the council and the staff. That is probably one of the best relationships I've ever had with elected officials and staff members of a local government. The last eight years have provided some interesting challenges with our budget, projects, and staff reorganization. I've had an opportunity to meet many fine and upstanding individuals in Kitty Hawk and other towns, Dare County, and on the state level. I have served some forty years in local government and find that it's now time to divert my attention to my family and other interests. And it's for this reason that I plan to relinquish my position as town manager for the town of Kitty Hawk as of December 1st in 2015. Uh... I wanna say that Kitty Hawk is a fine place to live and... And to work, and I wanted to thank town council for the opportunity to serve as town manager for the last eight years.
And we appreciate your service, and I will add that, uh... You came to us at a time when there was a lot of upheaval. Uh... We had a lot of, uh... Legal issues that you've had to address and clean up. Uh... Then we had a downturn in the economy that our generation has never known, come close to what we always heard our forebears talking about. Um... And now we're doing beach nourishment. So it's, uh... It's been an interesting time.
Yes, it has. It's been very interesting.
And it's kept you busy.
Yes, it has.
We appreciate your service and thanking you for coming when you did. Sorry to see you go, but I do understand that because I'm feeling that pain myself, but...
Thank you.
We'll all get there.
Thank you very much.
All right. Uh... Mr. Attorney?
I don't have any updates for you on the Winx matter. Uh... I'm still waiting for a response, so I have communicated, and if I got something, I'll... I'll let you know. Uh... Other than that, I don't have anything else for you tonight.
Okay. I have a question for you, uh... And I'll go ahead and ask it while we're here. The Overton Place.
Uh... Since the last update, I... I thought about it, but I didn't think about it until five o'clock this afternoon, so I didn't... I wasn't able to get Barbara to check on what the update was, but the... The last update that we had was the... The one I gave you where he said he had something pending, but...
Yeah, but you know, he'd been telling me that for about six months.
I know.
Does council have to jack somebody up? I mean, come on, you know? This is ridiculous.
I...
Um... What do we need to do if it... If you're... If you call and find out nothing is really happening, what does council need to do to help the people in this town get rid of that? I mean, it is, you know, it is a safety... It's more than a nuisance. That's a safety issue.
Well, it is, and... And you can... You can start imposing some civil fines and then seek some enforcement through that avenue. Uh... But the... The only result of that is you may end up owning that property at some point in time.
Well, we could do something with it if that happened.
You could do something with it at that point in time. Um... I will try to find out and get back to you tomorrow, get an email out to you as what the status is.
Right.
And see if we can get a date for when he thinks this is gonna be approved and they're gonna transfer ownership.
Can you pass to him that council's patience is about over?
I... I think I can convey that.
Are we in agreement on that?
Yeah. Definitely.
I think it's time for us to take some action.
One of the property owners called me the other day, and... I see people in there.
Huh?
I've seen people in that go back in their parking lot.
Of course. Yeah, they're scrappers and whatnot.
Scrappers, it needs to be cleaned up.
This whole thing is... It's time. All right? Please pass that on to him. Uh... All right. Town council?
Yeah?
Craig?
Mr. John, thank you for your service to the town. Looking forward to the rest of this year serving with you. It's... It's been a pleasure and an honor.
Thank you.
Chief Spivey, I had the pleasure and honor of looking at a pretty nice fire truck out front earlier. Uh... I think you and your department members designed it. You did an outstanding job. Looks great, fully functional. Take care of it because it's gonna be lasting for a while.
And these folks are gonna be here for a while.
I'm fine. How about you?
I'll just add my thanks to... To John.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All the... All the help over the years.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
The only thing I'm going to comment on to is, um... We had the washout of the road, and we had the overwalk that is now an observation tower, but anyway... It was washed out, and, uh... Willie got people onto it. And the funds... Make sure the Recreation Committee understands that the fund that we've been able to hold back and reserve, we needed that, and that's what it was used for. And there'll be other instances like that.
I'll be glad to pass it.
So we're not going to, uh... Use that fund willy-nilly. We're gonna use it for that kind of repair. We have a lot of parks and things that will need that over time.
Yes, sir. I'll pass that along.
Thank you. All right. I don't have anything else. Um... Public comment. Final public comment. Anyone want to speak at this public comment? No? We all want to go home. So do I. Letting the record show, no one came forward. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're done.